Councilors Barar and Maderos, I see you online. If we could just check your mics quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, checking in.
Thank you, we're hearing you both loud and clear.
Welcome, everybody, to the Planning and Development Committee meeting Monday, February 6th. As we begin today's meeting, we'd like to acknowledge that we were gathered here today on the treaty territories of the Mississaugas, the other credit First Nation, and before them, the traditional territory of the Huatashani, Huron, and Wendat. We also acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis, Inuit, and other global Indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. We are honored to live, work, and enjoy this land. We will begin with the, with roll call. Deputy Mayor Singh.
Present.
Counselor Santos.
Present.
Counselor Vicente.
Present.
Counselor Bar.
Present.
Counselor Keenan.
Present.
Counselor Maderos.
Present.
Counselor Fortini.
Present.
Counselor Tour. Counselor Power. And Mayor Brown. If he's here. He's not. Approval of the agenda, I would like to vary this order only because 7.3 is the presentation for 7.1 and 7.2, so I'd like to bring 7.3 first. I don't believe that there are any other changes. Are there any members that would like to add, remove, delete, change, anything on the agenda? Seeing none online, anybody? Seeing none, Counselor Power, you move approval of the agenda? All in favor? That carries. Declarations of conflict of interest, are there any members that have a conflict of interest that they'd like to state on today's agenda? Seeing none. Our consent motion, I'll go through, I won't go through consent because there's, we're not going to put anything into consent. There are no statutory public meetings, we do not have any public delegations as of yet. So we'll move right to the staff presentation, 7.3. Staff report presentation, continuous improvement, updates, and proposed fee increase, planning and built, planning, building, and growth management. And I don't have anybody that's, any names.
Through your, through your chair, Palashi, the two reports you have before you on today's agenda speak to the department's efforts in continuous improvement that stem from a account, audit, and accountability funding stream that we received from the province about a year ago. The report also speaks to some of the department's efforts around strategic workforce enablement and planning. And then the other report speaks to the adjustment in our fee structure as we move towards a full cost recovery. The team has put together a bit of a presentation to walk members of committee through, and Alaha Safi, advisor, special projects, along with Carolyn Crozier, manager of development services, will be taking the committee through the presentation.
Excellent.
Thanks, Steve. So, next slide, please. Thank you. Today's conversation is really focused on three things. The first will be the key drivers of the, of the continuous improvement work that the city has engaged in, and I'll be highlighting the city's development and building permit activity in 2022. I'll then pass it over to Carolyn, who will speak to the three continuous improvement projects the city has completed in 2022, and how the recommendations will be implemented over the next little while. And lastly, Carolyn will also provide an overview of the proposed fee increases for development and site plan applications across the city. Next slide, please. Awesome. So here on this slide, you'll see a dashboard that provides an overview of some KPIs that our planning analyst, Dip Singh, tracks on a weekly basis. And as you can see, 2022 was a year of significant development activity across the city. We received close to 1,000 applications and successfully issued approval for more than 50% of them. This really speaks to the city's ability to pump out approvals in a quickly and timely manner. Build completed a benchmarking study in 2022, and Brampton was ranked fourth for the quickest approval timeline, and this is all thanks to council's investment in staff and technology. So moving over to the employment data there, so we have received a total of 114 applications which lead to unemployment use, and most of those do fall in within the industrial category or mixed uses. Last week during a council meeting, economic development did give a presentation highlighting the city's low vacancy rates for office and industrial developments. And as you can see here, there's approximately 900,000 square meters of office and industrial space that were proposed in 2022, and over 200,000 square meters have received approval. So this will definitely assist with the growing demand for these types of uses. Now, moving on to housing, there are a total of 7,612 units, housing units that were proposed through formal applications in the past year. Majority of these were in the form of apartment units, and again, this just speaks to the city's evolution from ground-oriented housing to more compact built forms. And in light of this growing development activity, it is also important to find a good balance between advancing development while also preserving the natural environment, and this is how we track the sustainability score for the development applications. And that's just noted in the bottom right corner of the slide there. Next slide, please. So moving over to the building permit activity in 2022. So last year, there was over 10,000 permits issued, and a great chunk of these were actually for residential units, followed by commercial, industrial, and institutional uses. While the construction value of permits increased by 18% in 2022, this was due to a province-wide reevaluation of construction values, which reflect the current cost of construction. And as shown above, permit revenue did decrease by 9% in comparison to 2021. So all this is really to say that the city has been really busy over the past year. Staff are actively working towards finding greater efficiencies and streamlining the development approval process to help facilitate the development of more housing and employment opportunities while also ensuring our exceptional level of service is maintained. To keep pace with the increase in development, facilitate approvals in a timely manner as Bill 109 has prescribed, and to meet the shifting housing targets set out by Bill 23, staff will continue to optimize levels of service through continuous improvement efforts. And now we'll pass it over to Carolyn, who will provide an overview of the continuous improvement projects the city has completed in 2022.
Thanks, Alha. And I'd just like to thank Planning and Development Committee for giving us an opportunity today to speak to the project work that we've been doing over the past year with respect to continuous improvement in the development services area. So as Alha has demonstrated, we've been incredibly busy this past year. And in fact, I'd like to point out that the volume of applications we received last year, as per the year prior to that, represents a 50% increase of the annual averages we received in 2017, 2018, and 2019. So business is booming for development services and everyone involved in that. And as Alaha alluded to, we did receive an excellent review from, from Build by way of Altus, noting that we were the fourth fastest in development approvals. And so while we are performing really well, there is always opportunity for improvement. And as we speak with our colleagues in industry and even amongst ourselves, we do recognize there, there are pain points. And these pain points really focus in the areas of the Committee of Adjustment, the, excuse me, Urban Design Review Service, and just the development application review process from, from end to end. And those two reasons, the volume of, of activity plus opportunities for improvement, were the real driving factors for us applying to the Audit and Accountability Fund for funding to do the continuous improvement work. And if you're not familiar, just a word on the Audit and Accountability Fund, it's managed by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. They've had three iterations of the program, we took advantage last year. And the program is really focused to help large municipalities with improving their local service delivery and ensuring taxpayer dollars are preserved and spent efficiently while also protecting and maintaining our frontline service. Projects that are funded through the Audit and Accountability Fund must be geared to modernizing service delivery, streamlining your development approvals, or other processes related to that. So we applied and had approved, sorry, next slide, please. The three files that you see on the screen there, as well as the, the project that Steve referenced, we did do a strategic workforce plan, but because today's focus really is around development activity, we've chosen not to speak to that, it is in the report. So we did apply for the three that you see on the screen, and the province was very generous and provided just under a million dollars for us to complete this work. Next slide, please. The first project I'll speak to is the Committee of Adjustment end-to-end review, and just because I have an opportunity in Charlotte here, I do want to thank the Clerk's Office. In the midst of facilitating the city's municipal election, they were very generous with their, their time and efforts in helping us navigate through all of the processes, so I did just want to say thank you for that. But we did use Dylan Consulting to help us go through the end-to-end review, and their, their findings were, you know, not much of a surprise to us, but it was good to really articulate and quantify some of the, the pain points in that process. One of which, you know, it's a highly manual process, the application is not available for you to submit online, you have to come to the counter with a paper application. We did identify some duplication. An interesting example is that we have members of the committee, plus staff from zoning, plus staff from development services, all going out and conducting a site visit. So we don't really need three people to go out and do that kind of work. I think really interesting was the average staff time per application, so a Committee of Adjustment application, we're spending 45 hours of staff time per application, which when you consider the nature of a Committee of Adjustment application, that is a huge amount of effort. For applications, while important, don't really generate new, net new housing or net new employment uses for, for the community. And when you look at the numbers from last year, we spent 20,000 hours of staff time processing Committee of Adjustment applications. Another item that we, we noted is that there's a huge number of deferrals, a full quarter of our Committee of Adjustment applications are deferred. And, and really what that means for us is there's not enough information when that application lands with us to actually process it in a meaningful way. So we create a lot of churn and a lot of rework, which is, again, time, staff could be better directed to, to another item. Next slide, please. So on the screen, a bit of a roadmap for how we are going to improve those processes over the next 15 months. And the, the activities have been grouped into three buckets, one is really around improving our business processes, one is around customer service, really moving everything towards a more online and digital format, and then finally around the regulatory framework. So one of the reasons we have so many Committee of Adjustment applications is because of our zoning bylaw, and through the completion of the comprehensive zoning bylaw review, as well as some immediate quick win amendments to the bylaw, plus some housekeeping, we will be able to reduce the overall number of applications that are coming forward to us. Next slide, please. And on the slide here, you see what the outcomes will be when we've fully implemented all of the improvement recommendations. And I think it's quite astounding to see that when we're fully built out in the process improvements, that we'll have an extra 5,000 hours of staff capacity that we can redirect into other application streams, like the development application review, where we're getting those big-ticket items like the subdivisions that deliver housing or employment lands. So we will begin this work imminently, and, next slide, please, move on to the next project. So within the subset of all of the different hands that touch the development application review process, we had heard from, from industry that there were some opportunities to, to make some of the work that the urban design group does a little bit more efficient and, and more effective. One of those pieces was around the guidance documents. I was identified that there were some gaps, some outdated information, and by closing those gaps, we'll be able to provide a better, more comprehensive service to, to folks who are applying. Second item is that our urban design team really goes above and beyond, which isn't necessarily a bad thing for staff to do, however, they go so far beyond in their service delivery that it ends up causing some delays in our process. And so the, the consultant, it was Dylan again, identified some things that we just need to stop doing immediately. We'll still provide great service, but we'll be reducing the bottlenecks and, and improving the overall application review processing time. Another comment or observation that was made during the project is that there is some overlap between what our urban design staff are, are delivering by way of comments and what the urban design review panel are providing by way of comments. So we really need to tighten up those, those two streams of commenting to make sure we aren't overlapping in any way. And then finally, there is a real need to consider the urban design department's position within the overall department, given how much urban design has changed in the past few years, and especially with now the direction that Bill 23 is, is taking us in. Next slide, please. So again, we have a pretty deep, this isn't detailed, but we have a detailed process improvement implementation roadmap that's really going to guide our activities over the next 15 months. And I'm really excited to say that, you know, the first point, updating key urban design guidance documents is well underway. Just a week ago, the team landed their tall building guidelines with us for review with the development services team. And work is underway with respect to updating the form, function, and structure of, of the urban design division and team and its role, and, you know, I'll leave it. Any further comments on that to Alan or to Steve to speak, speak to? Next slide, please. And finally, the, the outcomes, and I know that number seems small when the Committee of Adjustment number was so big, 5,000-plus hours, but considering the scope and the size and the scale of urban design, that's, that, that is significant, all things considered. And the savings of 350 hours of staff time again will help us ensure that the urban design review process is not the, the bottleneck in the process, and it will overall help us improve our development application review processing timeframes. Thank you. Next slide, please. So the final project I'll speak to is, is the big one, the development application end, end review. And within this project, we looked at everything saving except for site plan, because that falls outside of the, the scope here. And I, I do want to highlight that this work heavily emphasized communication and consultation with, with industry, and we did spend quite a bit of time, we had three or four different sessions with Build members to really understand from the outside looking in what their experiences are with our processes. And where, while there's a page in the report that really emphasizes how great the Brampton team is in delivering the service, there is, again, those opportunities for improvement and... Oh, yes, thank you, Alan. We also spoke with private sector consulting firms. So it was a very robust set of consultations, and we talked with all of, all 16 divisions that touch development application review at any time. And so we, we found that, you know, there's opportunities to streamline our circulation processes. Our processes are quite standardized and consistent, but there is, again, there's additional room to standardize things with respect to how we do our comments, our review cycles, our legal agreements, and our standard conditions. And again, using Exella is a, has been a great tool for us. The, the data that you saw on the first slide, we wouldn't be able to derive that data unless we had a database to pull it from. But again, there are still some opportunities to make that system better for us, and the report did a special section just on that program and how we can make it work better for us. And finally, there was some opportunities identified, and actually work being led by my colleague Dave Vanderberg with respect to the pre-consultation processes were suggested, and that work is underway, as I, as I mentioned. Next slide, please. So again, our roadmap over the next 15 months. Happy to share that some of the work is complete or already underway. We didn't want to have any downtime when the report, final report landed with us in early December. We are considering some improvements that will positively impact this group here, Planning and Development Committee. Considering removing the information report and just going to presentations, there will be some time savings there, only presenting when requested by the public. And with respect to the Exella program, we've been working very closely with the IT team for the duration of this project over the past year to really understand what is required for us to get Exella where we really need it to be to help us advance the outcomes we're trying to achieve. Next slide, please. So just to conclude this project piece, upon full implementation, we are forecasting up to a 25% reduction in our application processing times. And that doesn't include what the impact will be of pulling in those 5,000 hours from Committee of Adjustment or the 350 hours from the urban design project. And all of those saved labor hours just mean we can redirect to those high-priority projects to meet our Bill 109 timelines and really deliver and drive the, the housing and employment targets we're trying to achieve here in the city. Next slide, please. Just gonna change the tune a little bit now, so that, that sums up the continuous improvement work that we've done. I'm now going to speak to the development and site plan application fees. So on the screen, you can see what is proposed in the report. We're proposing our pre-consultation fee be increased to $2,000. We're also proposing a 25% increase to all applications, save and accept Committee of Adjustment. And this is a, a practice that we have continued over the past few years, recognizing it's regular, everyday Bramptonians who utilize the CFA. And we don't want to make it unattainable for folks to be able to minor their, their, pardon me, to be able to modify like their property to better use it and enjoy it. On the screen as well, you can see what our current fees are and what they will look like should council approve the proposed fee increase. Next slide, please. So it's always helpful to talk about fees in comparison with our municipal counterparts. Brampton has consistently been to the left, on the lower end. Our application fees are quite low when you compare them to other comparable municipalities. And every increase that we've implemented in the past few years, typically 23% to 25%, has kept us and our fees quite low and helps keep us quite competitive, and every increase helps us reduce the impact on the tax base. Next slide, please. So improving cost recovery is something we're, we're always mindful of. If we're not able to collect fees through applications and from applicants, the, the burden has to fall onto the tax base, and we feel quite compelled to make sure that that burden isn't too much. But you can see on the left here what our current cost recovery ratios are. We're typically recovering 50% or less of the cost to deliver development application review services from our application, uh, application review fees, and the rest of that fee is being subsidized from the tax base. The slide, or the image on the right shows what, if the 25% increase is approved, will have on that. And it's, it's a modest improvement. Still, most of the fees will recover 50, less than 50%. I would mention that, you know, a move to full cost recovery is not something we've proposed in any of the most recent fee increases. And any additional increase beyond the 25% fee proposed today really should be done following a comprehensive fee review. And I, I will note, for those who may be sitting on the internal audit committee, that that is a recommendation that they will be bringing forward, and it is also denoted in our fee report as well. And we do intend to initiate that comprehensive fee review later this year. Next slide, please. So I have a special focus here on the pre-consultation application fee. The fee increase proposed is much greater than 25%, it works out to about a 200% increase. There's, there's pretty strong rationale for that. Currently, we charge $644 for a pre-consultation, and the level of service that you get for that six, it's very good value for money. You have an opportunity to speak to up to 16 different divisions, our external commentators. We give you a fulsome checklist of all the things you need to submit to bring forward your application for completeness. And we'll also tell you some things that you may want to consider changing to make sure you get a positive result when that application lands with council. And as you can see in the slide on the left, this is how much, the blue bars show how much it costs the city to deliver the service and how much we're recouping by way of the, the fees that we charge. So we think it's, it's fair and reasonable to propose an increase to $2,000. And the slide on, or the image on the right shows what some of our municipal colleagues are doing with respect to their pre-consultation fees. So both Hamilton and Mississauga have increased their fees quite significantly to help move towards that cost recovery model. And with that, that brings me to the end of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you again for giving us this opportunity to bring these matters to your attention.
Thank you very much. We can go to questions. Are there any other presentations? There is not. Before you is the presentation specifically for 7, 7.1 and 7.2. If you have any questions on, on any of, even the items, the 7.1, 7.2, you can ask them now. now, as per the 7-3. Anybody online? Seeing nobody online. Any members here? Move the chair, be heard. I guess I can start with fees, and it is a big increase, but I think that, you know, given the fact that, you know, Mississauga has gone up 237% now, and we're still well under some of those numbers. And I think, you know, we need to look at some kind of plan to eventually get to cost recover some point. Obviously, we don't want to, you know, shock everybody's system right off the bat, but I do think that we need a plan to, you know, over the course of two, five, 10 years from now, we're fully cost recovered. There's even, there's still people that have come to me to say, oh, your Brampton's fees are way out of line, and just seeing this here, no, they're not compared to every other municipality. You know, we're significantly less. I've gone through the end-to-end in a great level of detail, and I love the fact that we did this. I love the fact that this says this is where we can, you know, learn and grow and make, you know, make our planning department that much better. So I do have some questions that I've jotted down. But I have to say, when I first opened up that document, seeing the disclaimer, and in particular, the portion about KPMG neither warrants nor represents that the information contained in this report is accurate, complete, sufficient, or appropriate. That just sent me off a different direction than I was ready to pick apart KPMG and everything. And I understand now from staff providing me with a little bit more context where, you know, they're just covering themselves that no other entity is able to use, you know, our information. But that being said, maybe in the future, we can put that at the end of the presentation. How long has this process taken? It started roughly?
Sorry, I didn't know where the button was. So through the chair. We received confirmation from the province that our ask for funding was approved in January of 2021. And then following the standard procurement processes, we really initiated the project in March, and we had a drop dead deadline. We had to have everything finished by the end of December, or we would risk losing our funding.
Okay. And it's fully covered by the grant?
The whole thing, yes.
Excellent. So I, and I appreciate a lot of the, you know, positive comments by stakeholders and developers of our staff. And I hear it all the time, and we probably don't tell our planning staff enough that, you know, they do, they do great work, they're very accessible, and developers absolutely, applicants love the accessibility of our planning department. I didn't see in here, and I kind of, I understand that, you know, our takeaways from this are probably some of the negative comments. And I'm glad that, you know, we're looking at these opportunities to ensure that we can, we can do better. Just to start, when I see 20% of the applicants requiring significant more attention than the others, what percentage of those applicants are kind of on the smaller scale of applications? And I guess how would we determine the small scales when we're talking about, you know, if they're coming forward with 10 units as opposed to 50, 100, 500 units?
Through the chair, maybe I'll start off and then pass over to the team. So I would say that that percentage is comprised not only of the size of the development application, but the level of sophistication, if you will, of the applicant and their consultants, for instance, who may not have had a lot of experience working in the city of Brampton. So without having the breakdown of that 20% in front of me, I would say it's a fairly high percentage. But I'll turn it over to Carolyn Alaha to kind of specify a little bit more of the data.
No, and that's okay. And I think I just assume that, you know, some of the big, you know, developers and applicants, I'm sure that when they come forward with applications, like they employ, you know, traffic people, environment people, everything on their team already. So, and they're big for that, and, you know, they've, and I, and I don't want to create, I want, I want everything to be fair for everybody. And I don't want because you're a big company, you get special treatment. That being said, maybe there is an opportunity for somewhat of a two-tier system where, you know, first, we can provide opportunity for applicants to get comments from other bodies prior to submitting for pre-con. But I also feel like when these, you know, bigger developer applicants come forward, then it's, you know, it's usually on a greater level of application. So time-wise, you know, I find that our planners, our staff are working a lot on those files because of the, because of how large they are, as opposed to working on smaller applications where it's constantly needing to help and position and push and direct. And so there's that balance there, and I'm not sure, not sure what to do about that. I think something, you know, maybe if we can get our heads around, you know, how we, how we can, you know, treat everybody fair, but also provide the opportunity for simplistic approach for the greater applications.
Yeah, if I could, through the chair, you'll recall from the presentation, if I could have that checklist back up on the screen that talked about restructuring D-Team. So D-Team is an internal mechanism that we have. It's called Development Review Team. It's a multidisciplinary team comprised of subject matter experts across the organization, and sometimes we bring in staff from, say, the region appeal or conservation authorities or what have you. Historically, D-Team was used for pretty much every single application, whether it be a temporary zoning bylaw, right up to some of the big employers like an MDA. What we've decided to do through this work, and we've actually implemented it over the past year, is really save D-Team for those strategic applications that are aligned with council priorities, where allowing staff just to move on those ones, and then focus time back at the desk on those smaller ones for those applicants who are, again, maybe not as aware of our processes, to give them some of the help with the learning curve or what have you.
So Steve, there used to be like a pre-pre-con almost, where applicants would come before staff, and they would, they would show everything about their application. And there would be some, just, you know, not minutes taken, but just off-the-cuff remarks. I don't like this here, maybe you want to change that there. Prior to that pre-con, where then they could come back and submit based off of staff's comments, is that something similar to this?
No, the D-Team is something that was brought into our standard operating procedure for, again, for all applications. I think that the pre-con light or pre-pre-con that you're referring to, Chair Plesch, is certainly something that, in my time with the city, we've entertained not across the board, but certainly for those applicants where we have a fairly good feeling that they're going to be, you know, moving forward the full development application, actually constructing something on-site, whereby, you know, they've got some high-level abstract renderings or thoughts they want to share with staff prior to even making the pre-consultation app. So we actually do offer that on a sort of a case-by-case basis.
So seeing in this report, I see a lot of comments, and members of council probably have heard this as well, constraints from having comments from the region, CBC, TRCA, other, you know, outside government bodies. We know that the region is in a tough situation right now. Their planning department is in a tough situation, but yet we still, we still need those comments. So regardless of how they're struggling, we need, we need comments from the region. Steve, you came from the region. From my understanding, I've heard that they have, they have three planners that work on Mississauga, and they have two planners that work on Brampton. Is that, is that accurate? And like, because I know firsthand, Brampton does way more applications than Mississauga.
Through the chair, I can't speak to the current FTE count in their regions development services teams, certainly something we can report back. But I would say during my time here with the city, the team that looks after the city of Brampton on the region side is, I guess, understaffed, given the pace of growth compared to other municipalities in the region. And I would say that it's not solely just the planning team in the region. When you look at a development application from sort of cradle to grave, it's an end-to-end process, right? So you have services like water waste, water modeling, traffic and whatnot, that perhaps also need the right amount of staff to keep pace with the development activity in the city. We do track the level of service from the region on monthly basis, so all of the applications we have, the, whether or not the comments from the region are coming in on time, and we track it by sort of, if you look back to your old library cards in the back of the book, the amount of days kind of overdue, we have that kind of tracking system. And that's used to inform our discussions and my discussions at a senior level with regional staff about, you know, moving forward on priority applications. And the dashboard that was shown at the beginning of this presentation, it's an annual summary, but we do prepare a weekly summary of development activity that is also shared with the region so that they can, and the conservation authority, so that they could resource accordingly.
Perhaps through, Mr. Chairman, I can just share further as it relates to information that we know from the region with respect to their commenting on development applications. As Steve notes, further to our tracking of their comments on applications, we've longstanding had discussions with regional staff about the need to have their comments much more quickly. More recently, we have worked with their staff, together with staff from other municipalities comprising the region, to speak to them about level of service agreement. So there is a level of service agreement that's being finalized now with the region appeal, whereby they have then, by way of that agreement, an understanding how quickly applications will be circulated to them for comments and how quickly their comments would then be provided to us. The key is, yes, you know, having that fully implemented and the commenting timelines complying with that level of service agreement. In that way, the region staff has told me that they're seeking additional budget complements to achieve some additional planners to work on our files. So the hope is that the improvements, you know, will be achieved soon, subject to those things. But we've been speaking very clearly with them about the need for those improvements.
Okay, so with that right there, then, is there an opportunity for us to do like a, because I'm going to like a joint venture, share a planner or something like that, where, you know, planners are working on files, but they also have, they're also employed by both, like a regional counselor, where they're working on regional, regional files as well, but they're dedicated to Brampton? Like, is there that opportunity? And I think that the region would be, you know, they would be somewhat in favor of that because they clearly need some assistance.
If I may, through the chair, I'd like some comment. That's something we can take back and discuss with the region and report back. I know from my time at the region, I had established a similar model with the Crater Valley Conservation Authority, where we had almost a planner exchange, if you will, and we had a shared resource and a level of service. And that evolved into a full program. So there is a bit of a template there that we could perhaps explore with the region's planning department. So we can take that back and report back.
And I'll never provide that direction. I don't think a council should. I think that's at the staff level, you guys have the conversation with the region, and if that benefits the city of Brampton and the region appeal, then I guess bring them forward at that time. So just based off of the elimination of the info reports, and if members recall, two meetings ago, I had kind of given you a little bit of an update on the staff time that it takes to go into an info report for the, for public, stat public meetings is significant. And I explained that we were going to try and, in March, we were looking at stopping those. We're going to try with maybe one or two to start, but I think, I think you look, you see this in the report, staff are clearly asking council support on this, and I think that now's the time. I won't provide that direction, but I'll say to staff, and if anybody has any concerns, I think we just stop it and, and, you know, have staff, if Steve, you want to talk to it, but no longer provide those information reports. Let the applicants and those consultants come and make their delegation, and that's what, that's what you have before us.
Yep. Through the chair, just for the benefit of members of the committee, what our staff are proposing is that, under the Planning Act, when a development application is submitted to the city, we have to advertise and give public notice for a public meeting of a planning application. Oftentimes, staff are writing an information report and then preparing a PowerPoint presentation with the exact same content as the report. So what, what it is, the sort of suggestion of staff and kind of baked into the recommendations you saw today is that, especially for those very routine development applications, that we sort of eliminate the public information report, we still have staff do a presentation. That presentation can then be uploaded to our website and accessible by any stakeholder or member of the public, and then we would still proceed with a recommendation report. Again, we would use criteria for that sort of elimination of an information report. There are some applications that may warrant both the information report and presentation, but it's something we want to pilot in the March Planning and Development Committee meeting and sort of trend and see where things go, and then we can report back.
Great. I still have a little bit more, but Deputy Mayor Singh, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, just, thanks to Chair Plesch. The sustainability, I saw the score, is that under, I know a few years ago, maybe a year ago, the bronze, the old bronze became the silver, and so is that under the new methodology or is this under the old one?
So through the chair, it was about almost a year ago, or just over a year ago, where council endorsed a new criteria, so that the old bronze is the new silver and whatnot. The scores that you see on the, you saw on the dashboard there are representative of that new scoring. And I do recall in the last term of council, I believe there was some commentary around how we are depicting and speaking to the sustainability scores in our planning report. So that's something we're going to be looking at doing to make it a little bit more prominent rather than it being an appendix.
Absolutely. You know, I guess on one side, majority are on the bronze, but it's all silver. But having said that, you know, we just got to keep pushing the envelope on that as much as we can.
And I would say that not only is it important to push reporting the initial score, but then doing that full reporting back, did the actual development or cumulative impacts of developments maintain a silver threshold?
Throughout the whole.
Throughout the whole project.
Yeah, that's probably more than half the battle, making sure that they say what they're going to do.
Yeah, and through, through Mr. Chair, through Counselor Singer, Deputy Mayor Singh, maybe just some additional information I can provide there. I think it's not that the new base level requirement is a silver threshold, but rather when it was that our environmental planning staff were adjusting the scores associated with the sustainability thresholds and matrices, the amount of score associated with the bronze, silver, and gold were changed, whereby it's now, in order to pass with the minimum of bronze, which is still the case, it requires more to get to that bronze threshold. It also gets, requires more to get to the silver threshold and gold threshold. So the threshold still is the bronze right now, but, but yes, more is required of applicants now than previously in order to get to that particular threshold.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, my question.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Still seeing nobody on the board, and I'll kind of summarize my comments before I get into a little bit something else. But item six on the D-Team at pre-con is what I've heard, I've heard before from applicants. Applicants really just want a decision. They don't, they've even said to me, we don't want, based off of Bill 109, we don't want our money back. We just want a decision. And if that decision goes a little bit longer than those requirements, it is what it is. We really just want, you know, the yes and the no's, and we want to work with the city. And there was tremendous positive feedback, not only from, you know, about this report, but about, you know, the way the city of Brampton handles applications. And I think, and I, I think looking at other municipalities and hearing from applicants, we probably do it better than anybody else in Canada. So I appreciate the good work that they've done. I love the idea of standard, standardized subdivision agreements, and I hope that with that, because it's taking too long for the subdivision assumptions, I really want to kind of get a handle on that, and I want to reduce the timelines on the assumptions of our subdivisions. of our subdivisions. It's, it's, it's so hard for a for a politician to go to homeowners that, you know, require stop signs or 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 need their, you know, the the roads are just so wavy for the for us to say, there's nothing we can do because it's not assumed. So I don't know if it's, we need to drive developers in in finishing them, and we need to hold them accountable to what needs to be fixed. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be able to be able to get in there to make any changes or anything like that. If a developer needs to replace a tree, assume the subdivision and then put a, you know, a flag next to it that you have to replace the tree. I don't think that, you know, that that's going to be a problem. Exella. So I've been here for a while now. Exella was rammed down our throats during lame duck in twenty, the twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen election term by former CAO Schlang. It was sold to us for, at the time, we were told it was going to be a million dollars and was going to answer all of our our prayers when it came to the planning, playing software that we needed at the city of Brampton. I asked Schlang, I asked Patari, I asked Elliot and a few others after that, where we were on how much we've spent on Exella. Because it was a million dollars packaged to us, I understand now that we've spent upwards near three million dollars. So it never had a council decision to to bring it to the city of Brampton. It was brought to us in in lame duck, where we didn't have that decision. And when I look at this and I see, just to start, lacking the ability to track data, that's exactly what we were told it was going to do. It was going to track all the data, it was going to be so easy to to use and function, and applicants were going to be able to submit and check and and eighteen opportunities for improvement related to Exella. Currently doesn't allow for the for the issuing of refunds. Currently doesn't automate notifications to applicants if the payment is due. Limitations on of character limits. Is this Twitter? Sorry? Planners do not receive notifications of being assigned. JPGs of the bylaw are not uploadable in the system, requires manual conversion to Word. Auto-populated templates are not user-friendly. And I really could go on and on, but I'm not going to. That was just kind of the coles notes. Ask your own questions. But I think that, I think it's time for us to to seriously look at Exella and and do something for best of Brampton. I I have gone as far as saying that I would want a full investigation into how Exella came into the city of Brampton, but I don't know what to do about that, because those people are all gone. And I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if we're just throwing bad money at bad decisions. So I do have a motion, and it's only requesting that staff leveraging the technology, in particular Exella, was a theme for opportunities to improve identified in all three studies, end-to-end review, urban design review, and committee of adjustment, with significant growth plan for Brampton, combined with our need to ensure what we are using the best available technology that meets customer service, financially prudent outcomes for the city. I would ask staff to undertake a value-for-money review of Exella and report back to council. That's the way I had written it, and then Charlotte put it in nice words. So it's, it's before you. Are there any members of of committee that have any questions about the motion? Anybody online? Seeing none, I can't move it. Can I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Singh, thank you. All in favor? That carries. No other members have any questions of staff related to item seven point three? It's been moved by councillor Tour that staff report, the presentation, well, that's a presentation, I don't have to, oh, it is a staff report. Continuous improvement, updates, and proposed fee increasing, planning, building, and growth management be received. All in favor? That carries. We'll go back to. Seven, oh, we've put it all into one motion? And that's seven one and seven two? Before you, taken as read, moved by councillor Tour, all in, Steve? Hold on one second, Steve.
Through the chair, certainly, this motion also touches, I believe, on the proposed fee increase. Staff are recommending a two-thousand-dollar pre-consultation fee, which represents about two-hundred-and-ten percent increase from where it is today. I believe you heard through Carolyn's presentation that internal audit will be coming back with a report later this month, part of which will recommend that council direct staff to take a more comprehensive review of our fees. And it's our intention to take a sort of a graduate phased approach to increasing fees.
You're proposing, it's five thousand dollars you're proposing.
Through through the chair, the the staff report is two thousand dollars.
Deputy Mayor Singh? Five thousand? So Deputy Mayor Singh, if you recall, we had a discussion in pre-agenda about moving it to five thousand. If we moved it to five thousand, we'd still be half of what Hamilton does and significantly less still of what Mississauga does. So let's have that discussion. So if we, if, right, currently, we're at six hundred and four dollars. Hamilton's at one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Hamilton is going from one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars to eleven thousand, seven hundred. It's an eight hundred and eighty and twenty-eight percent increase. We're looking for a seven hundred and twenty-seven percent increase. What that does is currently one point seven five million dollars is is the cost to the city to do all of the work on these applications. Our cost recovery currently is ninety-six thousand dollars. So of that one point seven five million, we recover ninety-six thousand dollars in our current fees. I think we need to look at opportunities to recover a little bit more. On a five thousand dollar increase, we're recovering seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. We're still a million dollars short. If you put the numbers like that. This is why I believe that that it should be increased to to five thousand. Councillor Tour, I'm sorry, I didn't see your name on board.
Just wanted to, it, like you said, it's a good discussion to have, and just to get an idea of the numbers. Like the chair mentioned, the Hamilton's proposing eleven thousand dollars for pre-con? That's right? What is Mississauga doing?
Through you, Mr. Chair, perhaps I can just direct members of committee to the report, and in particular.
Eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
What are they currently at?
They're currently at one thousand, two hundred and sixty.
Okay, that that answers my questions. I was just going to say that, but one thing, if you can expand on Steve, my only concern was that, you know, with the fees being six hundred dollars, it's, if a resident comes to us and says, you know, have this proposed application, or I want to develop my site, build a house, right, just under a lot, and we tell them, why don't you go to planning, take your pre-con application? And it's relatively easier to do with the six hundred dollar fees, it's not a big barrier, but pushing it up. But you mentioned that there is a meeting they could have before that, before pre-con, where they could talk, like, where we could send, and I, I'm not talking about, like, developers, industrial, they can all fork up that fee, no problem. I'm talking about a person just.
A little guy.
Yeah.
If I could, through the chair, through you, councillor Tour, that's exactly it. The the proposed increase is not meant to be punitive by any means. We offer counter-service, no different than we would irrespective of the fees. And I can tell you in my time here at the city that staff have always gone above and beyond at the counter to to support people in terms of giving them the right guidance. I would also suggest that the fee increase to five thousand is appropriate, given the volume of pre-consultations that we do have. It tends to trend as the highest application type by volume, and the numbers that Carolyn showed you, we need to really start focusing on putting the right staff to the right activities that are going to, you know, bear fruit for the city.
Okay. Is it possible to to have it in a way that if you're doing a single home, like you're the, you're a lot, a single house, a single dwelling, and you're and you're coming with that pre-con, maybe that be at two thousand level? And everything else, if it's more than a single dwelling, you're five thousand?
I think I understand where you're going, and I think what I would probably say to that is, if you're building, if you're building a house, you know, I think it would be good to know how much, how much does it cost to actually build a house? Is it three hundred thousand dollars?
More.
If it's more than that? So then what's five thousand dollars? With the service that's provided to you at the counter and and the city of Brampton, what, you know, what is five thousand dollars? We're not talking about, we're not talking about a shed, right? We're talking about a house. That being said, I think it'd be good to refer this to council, so that we can have more of a a conversation about about this and and make a decision at council. Steve?
If I could, what I might suggest, then, if if council wishes some more data on this to to support a proposed increase, is certainly you have staff's recommendation of of two thousand for the pre-consultation. There is a report coming forward by internal audit to council, I believe it's the February, sorry, Committee of Council, I believe, February twenty-second, which will be directing, I've seen the report, there's a recommendation directing the Commissioner of Planning, Building, and Growth Management to undertake a comprehensive review of all of our fees and report back to council. That would be, to, in my mind, the sort of the vehicle to to bring that information if if that is something for council's consideration today.
But that tells me if we make this decision at council, then that's a reopening if staff are bringing forward a change of fees again. Councillor Tour?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just want to say that since we're dealing with the item right now, the way it is, at, since since we're dealing with it the way it is right now, Planning Committee, I suggest we deal with the matter now, and we just do that. And the rest, like, when that that report comes in later in February for all other fees, I think that's a discussion to be had at that time. For this particular matter, I think we should be doing that today.
If I might, through you, Mr. Chair, just, it might be helpful for the committee to to know, maybe some additional information just as relates to types of pre-consults and types of development applications. You know, i- if it is that there is a, an instance, like what councillor Tour is noting with somebody wanting to build one one home and such, that that typically is not a a development sort of application type that would be associated with a rezoning application or an official plan amendment application, and wouldn't require a pre-consultation application at all. So really, these fees wouldn't apply in that case. And and it is such that within our official plan, where it states that there is discretion that could be had by the planning department through the commissioner and the director even, with respect to whether a pre-consultation application is is required. So i- if it is that there is a particular development scenario that a landowner wants, and really it is as modest as what you're describing there with, you know, one unit and such, you know, it could very well be that likely that we would not require a pre-consultation application in that sense. So really, in that scenario, really, I just want to inform members of committee that there is not, I guess, an instance in where that full breadth of, if if it is that committees looking at the opportunity of providing a five thousand dollar fee, really wouldn't apply in those cases.
Thanks, Alan, I think you sold us. We're good. I'll just read the, that Schedule Eight of the Tariff of Fees bylaw with respect to planning and other municipal applications. Bylaw eighty-five dash ninety-six be amended, be amended to reflect the fees as set out in Appendix A of this report effective February first, twenty twenty-three, with the exception of pre-consultation fee to be set at five thousand dollars rather than the two thousand dollars. Everything else be taken as read, that's moved by councillor Tour, all in favor? That carries. And the other items were captured in that motion? There are no minutes, no other business, no referred items, correspondence, eleven point one, was that captured in the motion? It was. Councillor Question Period. Any members have any questions? Anybody online? Seeing none. Public Question Period. Is there anybody in the public that would like to ask any questions? Any emails that we got? Nothing? None. A German, it's been moved by councillor Power that our next meeting, regular meeting, will be Monday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM or at the call of the chair. All those in favor? That carries.